There's no public hearings tonight, or presentations, or special reports, I believe. Anybody in the public like to make a public comment? Request for removal from the public of any items of the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda is, tonight is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 16th, 2017, and the approval of the bills?
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions? Comments? If not, call the roll.
Belsley?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have nothing tonight. Village Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator?
I have a couple items tonight, Your Honor. The first you will see in your packet is ordinance number 17-24. It's an ordinance making amendments regarding reconnections and collection actions to Chapter 15 of Title 8 of the municipal code. Just as a... Do I need a motion before I talk?
If we could, have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Basically, this started out, we have properties that we see will have other indebtedness to the village, such as mowing because of violations for grass height, or that type of thing. And their utilities will be shut off for non-payment. And we have not had much success in some of these properties, collecting the indebtedness for the violations. And we were wanting a mechanism in which we could basically not turn their water back on without them paying everything that they owe. Basically, the way that corporate counsel explained it, any payment that they make to us can be applied to those charges that we see fit. So, in essence, we could not reconnect their water until everything's paid and filled, because we could look at any payment that they make as payment on the indebtedness for a violation, rather than for their utilities. So that's the initial part of this. And in looking at that section, there were a couple of issues that we incur quite frequently. When we do disconnect someone for non-payment, oftentimes, they'll call or come into the office and pay their bill, say, at 4:15 in the afternoon. Well, our Public Works gentlemen go home at 4 o'clock. So we're calling someone out on overtime pay to go and reconnect their water between 4 and 5. So we had always assessed, if you get your utilities disconnected, no matter when you pay to get it reconnected, you pay a $50 reconnection fee, because we have to send someone out to disconnect it, and we turn around and we have to send someone back out to turn it back on. And so, these ones that we're calling out on overtime, we would like a higher fee. So we would like to change the reconnection fee for those people who come in after 4 o'clock, but before 5 o'clock, to $100, versus the $50 that everyone is charged. In addition, we would like to make it so that if you, say, you call in at 5 o'clock, we're going to, you know, if we get payment after 5 o'clock, we are not going to reconnect your services until 8 o'clock the next morning. And that's to avoid the people who call up to the dispatch office and say, "I went online, I paid my bill, you know, we need you to pay, you know, turn my water back on." And so, we were looking for that also. And we also want to put it in the code. We currently require that there be someone home when we turn either your water or your gas back on, you know, especially the gas, because we have to come into the home and light the pilot lights. But for the water, we want someone to acknowledge that they're there, in case somebody turned a faucet on when the water was turned off, and if no one was home and they didn't realize it, we could flood a basement, or flood a bathroom, or something like that. So we always want, require there to be somebody home, but it wasn't in the code that that was the way it was. And the other is just to add, we use the Illinois Debt Recovery Program, which is a part of the state where we can send delinquent accounts that have, we have tried our collection actions and haven't had any success. We can send the account to their... And what they do is if the person is due any Illinois State refund for taxes, or that type of thing, it's a type of garnishment, where they can take the money out of whatever money they have coming from the state, and then they forward it to us for payment on their bill. So that's it in the nutshell. If you need any further explanation, I can try.
Any comments? Questions?
I have a question. It is not the practice of the village to discontinue utility services for non-payment of abatement charges, liens, or anything, right?
Right.
This is only if, if, if there's non-payment of the utility bill, and then they pay, come in to pay that utility bill. We would also, would these changes require them to also make good on any other costs, fees, whatever, due to the village?
The recent incidences that we've had of this have been like property management companies. They're not individual homeowners. They're, you know, some company from out of the state that owns a house in Morton, and doesn't mow the grass when it's empty, doesn't pay the bills. And then, this is maybe, hopefully, some other mechanism we have to get the money paid back to the village, because we only bill them for what it cost us, for someone to go out and mow. So, you know, that's money out of the village's pocket, so we would like to get that back as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item I have tonight, Your Honor, is Resolution 05-17, which is a resolution authorizing intent to fund the Morton Economic Development Council. And basically, this resolution is to update the resolution that was passed in 2015, which had a two-year window in it, in far as funding for the EDC. The amount is 30, or 55,000, which remains unchanged from at least the last four years that I can tell you. I hadn't, didn't have time. Clinton asked that question, I didn't have time to look.
I think it goes back to 07, I believe.
Is it 07? Okay. So this is just a resolution authorizing payment from here forward.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Just for, maybe, for the public, for those who aren't as aware of the EDC and its functions, how is this money used, and where do the taxpayers, where do they see some of the benefit with the EDC?
Money is used by the Economic Development Council to fund their activities in regards of looking for new businesses to come to town, or to keep businesses, retain those that are currently here, from leaving, and/or expanding, or that type of thing.
So essentially, to help, investing, so to speak, to hopefully bring new revenues into the town.
And this is to alleviate us having to actually have someone on staff. A lot of municipalities, you know, employ their own Economic Development Director, and this is to avoid us having to do that.
Julie, I think you, that's the, that's one of the biggest points there, is to keep, it's kind of a private-public cooperation, to try to, to try to drive that. And I think one of the things that, why I believe it's a good investment, is because of the difficulties that the state of Illinois has. One of the things that we went back, Roger, with, you had a huge project that you just, just finished up, and, you know, Randy, you saw the benefits of that, where we changed, or we actually narrowed down the...
What, the enterprise zone?
The enterprise zone. And that was an incredible amount of paperwork that had to be, that had to be done, and the, the EDC played a big part in that, of helping Roger get that documentation done, so that we stayed, made sure that we didn't lose out in that, because they shrunk the enterprise zones from, I mean, it was, it was quite a few, to, like, they almost reduced it by 75 or 50 percent. Leanne, what was the, that number, was it about, almost, about 75 percent of the number of enterprise zones? So we had to combine with other parts of Tazewell County, so that businesses, when they do additions to their property, or when they are, you know, their, their sales tax with building materials, on things that they can actually get back, also just the recruitment process and all those things. So it's, it is a really good, it's a big number, but it's a really good investment, especially when we're in these competitive times, because when a business is looking to move, it's not just about location, or, you know, it's about, hey, what are you, what are you doing for me, what kind of resources, and making sure that we're presenting that to them in a way that, that makes sense for them, so that we're recruiting them.
But as big as the numbers that is, to have her own, it'd be about double, too. You have healthcare costs, car, phone, additional staff.
I, I think it would be bigger than double, to get somebody that was, yeah.
That's it.
Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The last item I have tonight, Your Honor, is to bring my recommendation to the board for our property and casualty insurance, our workman's comp insurance, and our cyber liability insurance that are due for renewal. We had done a request for proposals from the local agencies in town for quotes for all three of these insurances. We received responses from three of the agencies, which were Unlens, Cool, and Gallagher. I have reviewed those, and it's my recommendation that we stay with Cool Insurance, with ICRMT, which is the Illinois County Risk Management Trust, for our property and casualty. Also, for, we would stay, well, we would not stay, we would go with ICRMT for the first time this year, for our workman's comp. And then, CFC is the cyber liability policy that they had in their package. And I really wanted to explain my thoughts in this. To be honest with you, the quote that we received from Cool was not the least expensive one, but as, I'm just basically a one-man show, when it comes to our risk management and our health, our human resource employment law, that type of thing. I need to be able to have a group that I can rely heavily on for information. ICRMT, as they are a, they, it's, they're called County Risk Management Trust, but they insure counties and municipalities throughout the state of Illinois. They specialize in governmental insurance. They provide, I go to seminars down in East Peoria that they have on employment law, or on workman comp, which, claim processing, things like that. They're a great resource to have, and I think that they bring a lot of value. They currently just actually finished reviewing our entire personnel handbook, and have sent me back, these are the new laws that have been updated, that you need to get in there, this is something that you're missing, that type of thing. They provide, they come in and they appraise our, all of our properties every two years, for free, and they have unlimited access to their attorneys. If Pat's not available, or if he's not comfortable answering a question, I can email their attorneys, which are with some firm up in Chicago, I can't remember what the firm name is. They will respond, you know, they have certain people that are, do employment law, some do liability issues, property issues, all the different areas that we need coverage for. They have attorneys that I can ask questions directly to and get a response, usually fairly quickly, for no additional cost. So, it's my recommendation that we stay with Cool, stay with ICRMT for our property and casualty, start using ICRMT for our workman's comp, because their quote was quite a bit lower than our previous carrier, and then also stay with our cyber liability policy, which, we don't, aren't required anywhere to have the cyber liability, but with the way the world is today, the village didn't have any coverage if something were to, you know, we have a lot of records, and none of those are available online, but we do pay, process a lot of payments online, so we didn't want to be the last pocket that the person that's injured could get, reach into without any liability policy. So, we took that out, starting last year, so it's one I want to continue also. So that is my recommendation.
Make a motion to, a motion of Julie's recommendations for insurance coverage.
Any comments or questions for Julie?
I would only offer, I had a little bit of line of sight to this, Sam, you as well on this, but Julie did a outstanding job of pulling all the information together. I think the request for proposals that went out was somewhere in the neighborhood of 65 pages, so it was very thorough, so that, on the good end, is when we get that information back, it, it helps to make for a good analysis. And she did a very good job. She did the heavy lifting for us to review the information, and, and to be able to come to a, a good decision, I think.
I'm very comfortable with it, and the work that she put in, so.
Thank you. Yeah.
Just to reaffirm on a legal issue, on professional services agreements like this, you're not required to take the lowest proposal, you can consider qualitative differences, as Julie has in her recommendation.
And one point I didn't make is, this quote is still $28,215 lower than our, our cost for the package last year, so, the, although the process was probably as much heavy work for the insurance agencies that had to pull it all together, you know, it is, we are going to save a significant amount of money this year, compared to last year, so.
Any other comments? Questions? Call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Chief of Police, we have the assistant here tonight, Jason?
I have a couple items tonight, Your Honor. First one is ordinance 17-22. It's an ordinance making amendments to Chapter 2 of Title 6 of the Morton Municipal Code regarding illegal dumping on materials other than lawn waste at the lawn waste disposal site.
Could we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? You have any comments to add?
I was just gonna say, basically, we've had some issues with some dumping that is not lawn waste down there, and this ordinance basically gives us a way to enforce it a little better than just with a warning, like we've been doing.
We've got it staffed, most of the time, right? So we're trying to stop it.
We do. And this, this ordinance, I believe, also incurs if they dump after hours when nobody is there.
Gotcha. Perfect.
I think we've had good signage up all along. What I might suggest is even with the passage of this ordinance, is maybe revise that, to even show the severity of the offense.
That's a good, good idea. Just about so.
I know Todd, Todd Frantiz, he's been kind of managing some things down there as a wastewater superintendent, so, I don't know if he had any comments, but he's always trying to improve things.
People go a long way to hide some stuff, though, don't they?
Yeah. Overall, I'd say the biggest issue with people's complaints is closed Monday and Tuesday. They have to realize that we are staffing it in-house, so it's taking two of our department's employees from 8:00 AM till 5:00 PM. So they get this Monday and Tuesday to catch up on in-house work, making this everything that we do. Would it be nice to be open seven days a week? Yes. But right now, it's just not feasible. Maybe in the future, like I said, this year's probably been our best yet, as far as garbage and stuff that's not allowed. So in the future, we possibly cut it down to one employee, maybe. That's gonna depend on, on the people in Morton. So, it'd be nice to be that way, but as of now, we'll keep it the same. Speaking of signage, we did get some new, new signs today, that we have ordered bigger exact dates, and we have that one that gives all the rules and everything. We're gonna probably pull that inside where the stop sign is, because people really can't look at that when they're pulling it up, of course. So, we're keeping things as things go by, but overall, we're happy.
I can add, we also get compliments for the guys that work out there, you know, that they say, "Where else can you pull in with bags full of leaves and that type of thing?" And actually, have them come out, and they actually help you, if they can, unload your truck and car, and, you know, process the things, so that they can get you actually through there quicker, but it's also helpful for those who can't lift them out themselves.
I've received the same comments.
And the ordinance was, in part, collaboration in my suggestion. We did have, even despite our best efforts to control this, we had to ban two individuals based on malfeasance in the spring, who even with the increased protocols, we still have people trying to bring things through, and beyond the consequence of banning somebody with the risk to human life that's presented, frankly, by, by some of these, some of this malfeasance. It seemed advisable to be able to cite people and fine them, in addition to preventing them from using the service.
And we must remember, the safety issue is, everything goes through a shredder. If it flies out, it can hurt somebody.
And that was one comment that they made to me, a few weeks back. Last year's product was by far and away the, the best. I mean, it's like, at least a moment of jump, so.
And that's going to a third party for use. I mean, that's the biggest thing, it's not just getting dumped, it's getting recycled into something else.
Well, I think eliminating the paper bags was the biggest, if people cannot buy things anymore.
Right. But we do not want steel, and we do not want concrete. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Parrott?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The second item tonight, Your Honor, is ordinance 17-23. It's an ordinance making amendments to Section 9-6-19 of the, excuse me, Morton Municipal Code regarding the prohibition of parking on unpaved surfaces.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead.
I don't have any comments on this. I believe Roger worked with counsel on this. I'm not sure if they have any, that they want to add.
Basically, what we're trying to do is, we had certain individuals that would park their cars in the grass, and we, we've kind of, our ordinance was clear they weren't supposed to do that, or we thought it was clear that they weren't supposed to do that. Well, Pat thought we could clear it up even further by removing what we removed, and rewording it, like as you see here, so that there's, their business isn't depending upon that, using that grass area, and that it just gives us a little bit easier way to enforce this current code, or the code that's before you today, so.
You have any additional comments?
No, our, our kind of enforcement practice had been that you can't park cars in the grass. Once we got into the code, when, when tested with an issue, there's this kind of nebulous exception about, except in conjunction with permitted business, and that, that left open too much gray area, so I think this buttons up a little bit of a gap in regulatory scheme.
Just a question, I know it's existing language, the durable and dustless surface, is that a crushed aggregate, is that what you're talking about there?
Lean on Roger a little bit there.
Paved, if you have a, a storage lot, it's supposed to be paved with something that's not gonna create a dust storm every time somebody enters it. So the drop, the paved, the, the traveled area has to be paved. That'd be concrete, asphalt, that type of thing.
I would lean more towards that meaning, some things go into a state of disrepair, you know, I mean, pavement, whatever, but I don't, I don't think rock is something we've allowed.
Rock isn't, that we're looking for.
But a lot of these areas do go into disrepair and aren't maintained, so maybe that gives us a little, a little better down the road. That's the way I look at it.
A little ambiguous.
I would agree.
Any other comments?
I mean, I think that's something, we could strike that out tonight, right? If we wanted to, I don't, I think that's a good point.
Well, I, I would say that if, if it is intent to not allow a crushed aggregate, or anything other than concrete, pavers, brick, I mean, to me, that's, that's just putting another ambiguity into the picture of that.
I would agree with you.
But if you have a storage lot, and the center aisle is paved...
That meets it, right now.
But the storage area could be gravel.
Yeah, and we have those.
Right. So we're not knocking those out by taking that out.
Well, I don't know, Pat, what's...
That's allowed now.
If, if, if that's allowed now, and we were changes, and you would arguably have an inconsistency between the two provisions, honestly, our issue, kind of the issue we're fighting is the grass, as opposed to, you know, gravel versus asphalt. This is something we could continue to evaluate, kind of as rubber meets the road, so to speak, and if, if we see code enforcement issues, where, where this is being a problem, we can revisit, or we can look to reconcile language in this section with other code language.
And you make a good point, Jeff, the way we've always looked at Ken, you know, a storage lot, it's gotta be fenced in, it's, it's written as, the traveled ways gotta be paved. So if you're a contractor, and you're gonna move your equipment and everything around, but you're storing stuff, you could store stuff on gravel, or millings, but the traveled surface has gotta be paved. I guess that's what you're saying, Jeff, is if they were then to park on the mill or gravel service, we would allow that.
I mean, we have contractors now that build new buildings, it's paved around it, but they have pavement going in the fenced-in area with gravel.
Right.
We have that new ones.
That would be one fenced-in area.
So they don't have to pave the entire...
That's, that's not what we're trying to...
Yeah, that's acceptable.
We have it in old areas, we have it new, but the goal is tonight...
But they would still be able to park motor vehicles on that surface.
On the gravel.
On that gravel surface.
Within the fenced-in area.
And there's been talk by different people, doing some of that, because of our trailer ordinance, people needing to park stuff.
Going forward, if we, if someone were to want to do that now, they'd have to have a building permit to create a gravel lot, which we wouldn't give them unless they met...
To pave areas.
Right.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Good question. If not, call the roll.
Belsley?
Yes.
Hare?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Corporation Counsel, you have any other comments?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. And Director of Public Works, you have a few that look like...
Several items. First and front of you, Item A, I have Resolution 4-17. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement extension for mowing trimming services. This is to Laura Daisy.
Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Yes, so this is, I've worked with Laura, Laura Daisy and her, typically her sister, have mowed for us for quite some time, since I've been here, so at least six years and longer. They've done a, a good job, they're very reliable. They're our main, I mean, we're, we're the only people they mow for. So she was willing to extend her current contractor, current price that we pay, three more years at no increase. So basically, every time she mows, in your packets there, if she mows every facility one time, it's $1,254. This is a small part of what we mow. We have part-time help that mow, and then our street department mows some of the creeks, some of those things, so this is a small piece, but a lot of our facilities, so I'd like to ask for approval of that.
And the staff does bring on her? Let's get it done. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Would you say, I mean, there's other times that you've bid probably similar jobs, you know, such as this, would you say that this, that this is pretty consistent, or at least competitive even?
I think this is a very competitive price. There's been a little bit added to it over time, as we've added some properties, but I think we had a small increase last time, but, you know, I, I pretty much said, if you're willing to extend it at no increase, I'd be open to that. But I think it's, I mean, I think we'd struggle to get this price if we bid it out. But I think in three years, I think we'll be prepared to do that. I think we may want to look at some things different. Like I said, we do a lot of mowing, so that might be the time to kind of look at everything again, and determine how we're gonna split everything up. So, at some point, I'd like to bid it out again, but I think right now, I think the biggest thing with Laura is, I get, I've not gotten any complaints seriously from her mowing. Uh, they're very dedicated, they're always here, and like I said, we're, we're the only, the only client, um, so she's here, uh, to mow. So that's what I like about Laura. Um, I think the price is very competitive.
Um, how often are these properties typically mowed during the summer?
Uh, once a week at the busy time. So you're probably looking at, uh, you're probably thirty-two to forty, uh, you know, if it's nice weather into November, thirty-two to forty mowings, uh, thirty-two on the low end, so somewhere in the middle there is how many mowings? So once a week, basically.
Enforcement mowing. For just what Julie mentioned earlier about it, people have leans on their property for maintenance, they do that for us.
And I think this is the second one with no increase, except when we added some ground for the mow, we weren't gonna ask her to do that for nothing. So she's been very fair to us.
Thank you for your library.
Any other questions? If not, let's call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, item B, I'd like to ask for approval. This is, uh, I dot resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for road salt.
We have a motion.
Moved, approved.
Second.
Uh, this is the first time we've done this, we've discussed it, I think this is a good thing. Um, it's, this just allows us to be able to use MFT funds to be able to buy salt. So if you look in there, we've appropriated sixty thousand dollars, uh, it's a thousand, approximately a thousand tons. Uh, we've been fortunate the last few years, so we have, uh, more salt, uh, than we've ever had and probably more salt than we'll ever have going forward. So we have it stored in several different areas, so, um, but this will allow us to use it. Hopefully every year we use some salt because typically we piggyback on Tazewell County, uh, they bid it out and we typically have a seventy-one-thirty contract. So, um, we're obligated to take seventy percent of the amount we order, uh, and then they only guarantee a hundred and thirty percent of that. So, um, six years into this job, I thought I'd always be on the other side of it, not having too much salt on hand. So we're very fortunate. But this allows us to purchase it using MFT funds.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the last item, item C, electric aggregation amendment update. Uh, I sent all of you an email on this. Um, unfortunately, I tried to get to tonight, uh, if I can get approval from all of you, that's, that's the goal I'd like to, to get to. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we had to make a decision on this by the end of October, uh, so it kinda came up pretty fast, working with good energy. So, um, the previous resolution allows myself, I worked with, uh, the mayor and Julie on this, but, uh, to extend the contract if it's a lower amount. So, uh, with our last contract, prices have stayed low and continue to stay low, so that's a good thing. Uh, it just, uh, gave us the opportunity to look into lowering the price for this next year and a half, starting January of eighteen, uh, by extending the contract. So this, uh, this agreement, uh, lowers the price from, uh, point oh five eight-five per kilowatt hour to point oh five-seven for the first year and a half, and then through December twenty-twenty to point oh five-five-nine-six. So not a huge, uh, decrease, but, um, I think it's, it's worth moving forward with it. Uh, included in that, um, last time was the first time we didn't include the civic contribution fee. Um, we previously had it, uh, working with the mayor and Julie, we decided to add that back. Uh, that could be added without, you know, going forward. So that, that would allow us, um, some additional funds back, uh, from Home Field Energy, uh, directly into the general fund for administrative costs, um, sustainability projects, those sort of things. Um, so that was included also. So with that, I don't need approval, but I'd be glad to answer any questions, comments. If the public has any, we'll have stuff coming out, they will eventually get another opt-out letter. Um, so we'll get information out. I always encourage everyone, um, you know, if they get the opt-out letter, they got concerns, call me, I'll, I'll speak to them directly. Um, unfortunately, when prices hover with electric aggregation, they hover close to what you could get from Amarin and others, uh, there's, there's a lot of people out marketing for that and they can legally do that. So alls I do is caution people to, to look at the contract, uh, this is guaranteed, locked in, um, so just know what you're opting out of before you do so. So we'll get information out, uh, but unfortunately, that's gonna come out again where people are gonna get that opt-out letter and some of them not sure what to do. Um, I would encourage everyone to talk to their family. Um, this is one thing that we do get a lot of calls, probably majority from elderly people. Um, so help them out, I'm not saying you, you won't get a better deal from somewhere else, that's very possible, um, but really look at the fine print.
Not likely. I'm honest, I know you're trying to, you're trying to get around that, but the.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's not likely that you're gonna get a better deal. And so Ginger's done a good job in the past of explaining that, that we just.
We're bidding this out with multiple, you know, cities, municipalities, that's why this came so quick. I believe Washington, not gonna name all of them, but there's a lot of them doing the same thing right now, extending that. So, uh, you're bidding in a, in a large group.
And I watched twenty, Channel twenty-one, the information, it had on there, Home Field Energy is our source, and if you get calls or whatever, please contact the office. So encourage you to look at the TV if there's anything, update that. But it does say there what, what we're hooked up with.
And there are some sad stories, that's why I add that, some people that wish they wouldn't have, and I can't do anything about it. So, uh, you know, don't give out your Amarin account number to people. Uh, when you do that, I think legally they can even switch you over. Don't give out that information to people that just come to the door and ask questions.
Cause the names they use, it's, it sound like energy companies.
Yeah, but there's a lot of them out there. We probably had a handful last year that came through. So when prices are close, uh, they can come to your door and maybe offer you, uh, you know, a little lower amount this year, uh, you know, those opportunities are there.
All right.
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, planning and zoning.
Uh, several items tonight, Your Honor. Uh, the first being ordinance number seventeen dash twenty-five. Basically, we're just adding that little sentence there that you see four dash four dash seven. If you are an electrical contractor or a homeowner doing it yourself and you fail to get the permit before you start the job, there is a penalty for that. It was in our plumbing ordinance, but we never, we did not have that language in the electric, so we're just adding that.
Can I have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Just, Roger, this is, does this apply across the board for residential, commercial, industrial?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, the next item, Your Honor, is, uh, a special use for three-thirty South Main Street for a mixed use. Uh, that's the V Gallery, if you're familiar with that on South Main. Uh, they plan to make a portion of the back part of that building, uh, a living quarters, a home, which kind of goes in line with what we've kinda want to see downtown, uh, with residential and, uh, the, the business use together. Uh, and that came with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? If not, call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, the next special use request is seventeen dash twelve, uh, nine oh one Detroit Court. Uh, that property, they have a plan for an indoor firing range and firearm sales, which is another special use. Uh, that came again with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission, and there are two people here that can speak to that tonight, should you have questions.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If not, call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have a new business in Morton.
The last item I have tonight, Your Honor, uh, regarding signs, interstate signs, the tall signs that you see out along Interstate seventy-four. Uh, I just wanna take just a minute here to review real quickly with you our existing sign ordinance. If you have a, a business out there, anywhere that would matter, for that matter, it could be downtown, but if your business is no longer there, then that sign, all signs, whether they're attached signs or freestanding signs, after sixty days that that business has not been carried on at that property, those sign faces need to be blanked out. After sixty days, up to a year then, they can stay that way, but after a year then the entire sign structure, pole, sign, whether it's attached to the building, whatever, that all has to come down. Uh, we've had some taken down already. For example, the old, the former Pizza Ranch, uh, there's a country kitchen, that sign was taken down, it's never been put back up. Right now, you can't even seek a variance to put up such a sign. Uh, but we have the former Ruby Tuesday property, which as you know is set idle, and in talking with the owner, Store Capital Group, I don't know how many hundreds of properties they own across the country, but it's a lot. Uh, and they're, you know, they're, they're willing to do it, take the sign down. They don't want to, because as he explained to me, and, Your Honor, that's how I brought it to you, he goes, we have a property that's already hard to market. There's, it's just sitting there, nothing's happening with it. So now we're gonna take that hard-to-market property, have them take down their seventy or seventy-four foot tall sign, and it's just gonna make it even harder to market. Uh, as we had talked in our, in our office, Craig and I, we didn't see an issue with those signs, uh, along the interstate, because we want somebody to be able to find their way to that, that restaurant or whatever the case might be, uh, hotel or whatever the circumstances would be calling for. But, uh, there is no mechanism now, if you have that sign, as I told, uh, the Store Capital Group people, once that sign comes down, there's no way to put it back up. You can't ask for a variance to do that. So we're wondering if we don't need, I wanted to give you a little bit of history then, Cracker Barrel was the first one of those high-rise signs that went up. And they didn't just arbitrarily pick a number, they actually had a crane hold up something that would simulate a sign at their site, and then they had a semi parked on, well, it's a different overpass now, but it, it was the North Morton Avenue overpass that went over seventy-four. They had a semi parked there to see how high does that sign need to be, if you're going eastbound on seventy-four, that you could still see their sign above a semi on that overpass. And they arrived at somewhere in the seventy-foot range. So all those signs that you see out there are from seventy-four foot to seventy-foot. Uh, and that was kind of the guideline that we used then when we granted variances to the others that you see out there, whether it be the Taco Bell or whoever, whatever they might be, the gas station there, uh, the BP station. So there's a lot of things that we could look at with this ordinance. One would be the length of time the sign could stay after the business is closed, is a year, is that enough? I'm not a real estate marketing person, I, I don't know. Uh, but we don't wanna put an undue hardship on them, I don't think. But we also, we have a bad, we get a bad enough rap of being not a business friendly place, and I'm not sure why, but, um, this person was willing, like I said, from Store Capital, do what they need to do, but his argument made sense to me, so I thought I would bring it to you. And I did bounce it off of, uh, Trustee Blunner, and he supports looking at the ordinance, uh, bringing it back at the planning commission level and have them study it and see what we, what changes need to be made. Uh, but it might be nice to get some comments from you folks as well. Well, Roger, their, their sign right now is actually. Blacked out. Blacked out. Right. And it's actually, I mean, while it doesn't look great, it's in decent shape. Yeah. You know, we've got, unfortunately, we've got one that's next door. Right. Couple doors down, that's a disaster. Yeah. And so that's the, that's the problem for me. It's like, you know, if that guy had his sign blacked out and was in decent shape, I'm okay with it, right? But, and how, how do we legislate or, and work this to go, the one guy, hey, clean it up? And, you know, you know, what, what do we do, you know what I mean? Like, that's the, that's the one thing, I don't care, I mean, to me, I, I let the sign be up there, cause it is true about that property. You take that down and put it back up, you're gonna, you're gonna cost somebody an additional hundred thousand dollars, maybe more, to take that thing down and put that back up, that they need to recoup in a property they can't move right now. So why would we get in the business of making it more difficult? But at the same time, we need to clean up the other one. Right, I mean.
It's not gonna be able to be put up back to back.
Right, the variance is, is a seventy-foot, the.
And that's gonna hurt, that's gonna hurt, that's gonna hurt. They could put up a thirty-foot tall sign.
Thirty-foot, so I asked Roger to put up the interstate.
Interstate corridor.
Maps on there, because I think what Roger's asking too, if we go to a public hearing, shouldn't we allow seventy-foot in that area for the restaurants and hotels? We do have the pizza, Old Pizza Inn, Ran, Pizza Ranch building empty, we have Ruby Tuesdays building empty.
I guess the biggest concern would be the future development, but they have to have a variance anyway, so if they put something up that we didn't like, and, you know, we also don't wanna have a, cause it loves, that needs a.
But I don't think there's any mechanism to get a seventy-foot.
No.
The limit is thirty-five foot.
Thirty.
Thirty. So you can't have these seventy-foot signs. When I spoke to Rog, when you're gonna rent or buy that building and you have to, you wanna move in, the kitchen's there, but you gotta go through the whole sign process, it, that's, that's a big deal. I mean.
It's gonna cost you revenue big time. Sam, to answer your question on the, that sign that's not, we could do that right now. You know, go to him and say, here, you've got this many days to either fix that sign or take it down, whatever you choose to do. We haven't done that, and, but we, we certainly could, and we could do that going forward. I mean, just.
Well, I could definitely say with my involvement with the business community and especially several different members throughout central Illinois, you know, who are, with the, way the economy's doing currently, um, positive for many, um, businesses are looking to expand. People are looking to purchase franchises, looking to expand and find communities that are business friendly and, you know, have ordinances that are in support of helping them to be able to expand. And that's one that's definitely a hindrance for businesses, um, you know, to be able to. I mean, proper signage, and especially from the interstate, you know, it's difficult to see, and if you, you can envision, uh, a lot of different places, you know, just traveling on the road, you know, under, just in a road trip, you know, if you can see a, um, a major franchise, uh, you know, for whether it's Panera or something like that that you see, um, typically it's cause of signs, not always just cause of the billboard that you see. Um, and so that's something, I think, any way that we can make it more friendly for these, uh, businesses to wanna come to our community, um, I think that'd be an easy one, and by all means, I would definitely support you, um, for the planning and zoning committee to be able to just be brought up in discussion from the public hearing.
And I did have a two and a half hour meeting with the hotels, and they were trying to fill more rooms. I think restaurants, gas stations help that, so it's one stop. And so I think we do have to look at the economic development, and if you look at that map, the, Rog, tell them about where that seventy-foot signs go from what, they, they go to about Burger King.
Yeah, Burger King, if you go up to the north there, uh, that stops just short of Burger King. Burger King would be that next little piece where the cursor is, right there now.
So we're not talking about Cortland having 70-foot signs?
No, no.
I want everybody to understand that.
Yeah, you want to be in the corridor.
It's in that corridor, yeah.
Which is right along the expressway.
Yeah.
And we had a new hotel looking at it, I'm sure they would have liked to have 70-foot. And I think we need to look at it, because the economic conditions, I would like a restaurant to go in there with a sign if we...
Clarification, I guess, or just...
That's what we're here for.
Question. Are you saying, under current ordinance, we're limited to 30 feet, and a variance is not an option in this day and age?
About, yeah, about four years plus a little ago, that was changed. The variance mechanism was taken away, there isn't a variance process to do that now.
Such as Pizza Ranch had to take their 70-footer down. They've remodeled the building, and they would like to fill it, but they can only put a 30 up, and they would really like to put the 70 back up.
And why, why did we do that? What was...
Well, the way it reads me, and I wasn't a part of preparing the regulatory framework, it appears to me that the board at that time wanted to move away from 70-foot signs, and the requirement that signs come down is to get the 70-foot signs removed, so that we kind of transform our signs into a 30-foot sign community.
I would tell you...
Going forward.
Yeah, there was a conscious effort that, that the board, and Randy, you could probably help me on this, is that we, that there was maybe some thought that 70-foot signs didn't look good, or were, I just don't know how well I voted on that, and didn't really think about the ramifications of it at that point, and absolutely on the other side of it.
Sam, those, I mean, I'm not a sign person in terms of, I'm not, I don't sell them, I don't, but they, I can see maybe in certain areas of the country, maybe you would want those restrictions, but here, we don't have any vista to the north that we're protecting, like, there's not a mountain range out there, there's nothing that you're...
Well, the westbound traffic, we don't, you don't need it, but the eastbound...
Right.
You can't, the exit is, you couldn't get to, you have to get off before, so they have to see that, you're going to be gone, so we're losing out on...
Yeah, east to your...
However, many thousands, thousands of cars that are going then to, you know, then to Bloomington for their stop.
And the hotels have had a consistent 20% that they need to be filling.
Yeah.
And that, so they, they've asked some tough questions, and this came up, I asked Rog to look into it. I know four years, four years ago, I voted for it, but it was a conscious effort, but when you drive out there, it doesn't seem offensive to me when it's just mainly right along the interstate.
Be different if there was more residential there, I think, I would have more, more sympathy for the, lighten the lighting at night, or whatever that might be, but that's a...
So in essence, we're asking the community to look at it again.
Yes.
The way I look at it, everybody will have a voice.
Well, that would start, I think that is the suggestion, is it not to take this back to the planning commission, open it up for public input, have a public hearing, and then bring that recommendation back to the board.
Correct. And that's more than just us, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Right. So you need a motion to that effect, correct?
I don't think...
I think, excuse me, a consensus would be sufficient tonight. It was on your agenda, it's a discussion, discussion usually encompasses what you've had, but not a vote on it, and technically, a vote isn't procedurally necessary to go back, so everybody's express support, Roger and I, or Roger can get it scheduled, and we can go forward.
So is there any objection not to have it? And Roger, please set it up.
Oh, we'll do it. And I apologize for the flag not being in its normal position.
Good, I don't have to say anything to you now.
Just seeing if the guys are paying attention or not, so...
Well, your table came fully prepared tonight for several items. Under the trustees, is there any trustee that has any comments tonight, or any items to go through? Okay, we have three items for closed section, closed session under five, I have to read all of these, right? Five ILCS 120 dash two C two, to discuss collective negotiating matters between the village and its employees or the representatives. Closed session under five ILCS 120 dash two C two, to discuss salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And the third one, closed session under five ILCS 132 C six, to discuss setting a price for the sale or lease of property owned by the village. Could I have a motion for closed session?
So...
Sex.
Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.[1763.83]